Let's have a, whoops, sorry, thank you very much. Good morning, welcome to the August, excuse me, let's start over. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't even know what today is. Today is Tuesday, September the 8th, that says it on this piece of paper right here. And this is the Audit Committee meeting. Let's begin with our pledge, with our invocation and then a pledge. Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and govern ourselves. Help us as we make decisions this morning that affect our neighbors and the citizens of this county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us to be sure our actions are based in truth and in fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great by the way, which is and one nation, God, visible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum this morning for the Audit Committee. And gentlemen, may I have an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to this agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's go right into the debate agenda, new business management services.
We'll go right into the audit reports. I'll ask Mr. Snyder to come up and present those for you.
Engineering Services?
Yes, I do have three reports to present to everyone this morning. Thank you for having me as usual. And just before I get started, this is the second time I've presented to this committee since the beginning of this pandemic. But these three projects, we started during the shutdown. And I just wanted to say thank you to the county staff and the staff at the two courts that we also worked with this time around. We had a lot of cooperation that made it possible for us to get this done in spite of, at times, some challenging circumstances. There are three reports. I'm going to begin with Engineering Services and then we'll talk about the Magistrate Court and the Probate Court as well. Apple iTunes update.
Let you have that.
All right. So, starting off with the Engineering Division. This is a large, broad swath of responsibilities that are included in the Engineering Services Division. We took a look at all of them. We started off with looking at the deposits from primarily the Roads and Bridges and Stormwater Departments. Traced this or deposit in the bank account without any issues. There were also two petty cash funds of $100 each. We observed petty cash accounts and found no issues with those. We looked at purchase cards and purchase requisitions like we always do. We selected a variety of those expenditures from all of the various departments. We viewed the invoices, noted proper approval, traced those to payment and found no findings there. We also looked at time sheets for all of the departments. We noted proper approval. We recalculated and traced the time sheets and found no issues there. We tested work orders for Roads and Bridges, which is an interesting area. There's a variety of different things that can lead to a work order. A work order can be open for a day or for a month. But basically, this is repairs to Roads and Bridges. We looked at the detail of all the work orders, underlying supporting documentation, employees that worked on it, the materials that were purchased, and found no issues there. Speaking of roadwork, we looked at the flagging certifications. This is a requirement coming down from the Department of Transportation at the state. But those recertifications, some were delayed because of the stay-at-home order. But we kept the project open and ultimately found that everyone was recertified for their flagging certifications once the stay-at-home order was lifted. We also looked at streetlight petitions and speed hump requests and looked at those petitions signed by the homeowners and had no issues with those. And then we looked at stormwater service charges and we recalculated those fees based on the square footage of impervious surfaces at a variety of randomly selected properties around the county and had no findings there as well. So, we have a good, clean slate for new management in the Engineering Services Division. Any questions about Engineering Services?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to the Magistrate Court. We performed several of the same types of procedures that we perform at the various county departments. But when you're looking at the courts, one thing to consider is that the funds that are held by the court systems typically held in a custodial fashion. What that means is most of the money that comes in is owed to someone else. And for that reason, we're constantly looking at reconciling back the bank balances from their internal records and looking to make sure those things agree. So first, we looked at the bank reconciliations themselves and we did note evidence of review. The reconciliations were performed correctly and had no issues with those, except just to point out that there were several, we counted 55 outstanding checks that were over six months old. That's what we call a stale check. The individual amounts of these checks were very small. Some of, one that I remember was $18. And the total of the 55 checks is $5,202, which to the county is a small dollar amount. So for that, we just recommended attempting to locate the owner of the $18 check and if that's not possible, considering the procedures necessary for unclaimed property, which ultimately goes to the state. And this is not an uncommon thing that we've discussed before. That we noticed. We also looked at this, comparing the general ledger to the case system, which is called Odyssey. So the Odyssey system is used by the Magistrate Court to process collections and maintain case information. And then they use QuickBooks as a general ledger. And so we compared the dollar amounts in the caseware system Odyssey to QuickBooks and we just noticed some differences. We noticed that the escrow report and the escrow account balance differed by $3,100 in October of 19, $3,600 in January of 2020, and then $2,600 in April of 2020. So one thing I noticed is it doesn't seem to be snowballing. It's not growing, but moving up and down. So I suspect that it's some sort of timing issue, but we were not able to tie the report back to the bank statements. And then there's another small thing we noticed here. When we were looking at those QuickBooks files, we noticed that there was a negative dollar amount of $362 in the accounts payable account. And we looked back and I think that goes back to 2016. It's a small thing that just needs to be cleaned up. So we just recommended reconciling the accounts payable balance back to zero because they essentially operate on a cash basis. They don't really reflect bills and receivables. And so that was, that just is an error in the accounting system, a small dollar amount that should be fairly easy to fix. We also looked at cash receipts and cash disbursements, noting no issues with either. We looked at purchase requisitions and purchase cards and finally time sheets and had no exceptions in that testing. Any questions about the Magistrate Court?
So Odyssey is not integrated with either Munis nor QuickBooks or?
Odyssey?
Odyssey is a Munis product.
Is a Munis product, which, but it doesn't seem to fully integrate. Yeah, it's made by Munis, but they use, but they use QuickBooks to maintain their, maintain their books in-house anyway. So, yes, it's a Munis product, but it doesn't seem to, at least as currently put together, really sync. Is that what you would say as well? Do you know if Odyssey is syncing?
It's actually a Tyler product.
Right.
Okay.
And Munis is one part of that. Odyssey is the court part of that. And no, they do not.
They're supposed to buy that, so.
They're totally separate products under that same parent company.
Tyler is the company.
Is that something that we as a county administration chose to purchase? Is that individual that the court chose to purchase? Is that, is there a recommendation that we can consider another measure of?
Odyssey, the, that may, I may not be fully qualified to recommend the type of software that the court should use. But in looking, I looked at this for several minutes trying to figure out why the numbers didn't match. And the way I would look at it is that in Odyssey, non-financial things such as the names of the people involved in the cases, the case numbers, the status of the cases, things like that are being tracked over there. And that system may be the best or may be one of the best for doing.
For tracking those cases.
For that, the, we were just trying to, we're always looking at the numbers, trying to make the numbers match. And like I said, perhaps it's a timing thing. So our recommendation is a little bit closer look at trying to understand what those differences are, if there is a reconciling item between the reconciled bank statement and the case management software. But I believe we noticed the same thing three years ago, perhaps in different dollar amounts.
I see, I seem to remember there was something with that. But, and again, the dollar amount's not concerning. But, but in this day and age with the, with the size of Munis and the investment in Munis and Intuit, I mean, is what, that's a vast percentage of the market now. You would just think that there would be a drive by products to integrate themselves. It seems, so they're manually translating all the reconciliations from Odyssey currently?
So how do, how do you think of how the QuickBooks information gets into Munis? Does that happen monthly or annually? I don't recall. But yes, there is a monthly process of comparing the Odyssey reports to the QuickBooks reports. And I just, they're just not exactly, the dollar amounts are just not exactly the same.
I'll give you a little bit of, just a little bit of background history on this. So Tyler is our enterprise solution. And when we went into that enterprise solution, it came with several products. Odyssey was one of the projects, one of the products that came on later after we were already on Munis. You'll find, I believe the Clerk of Court is similar and Magister Court. They're very, they're very used to QuickBooks and they like them. And where we don't have that, we're very used to Munis now. We've made our people transition to Munis. Some of the courts have not mandated that. So some of the elected officials have decided they would do this. So yeah, there may be some double work. I'm not sure as far as the, how Odyssey integrates into Munis. I would be shocked if Odyssey didn't integrate into Munis at all. I think it's probably more of a training issue. But I know that the QuickBooks issue is something that's chosen by the elected officials to do that instead of trying to learn and use the Munis product.
Okay.
Because we could use, they could use the Munis financial software right now and not have to do QuickBooks.
I'm sorry, my understanding, I thought the QuickBooks was integrated or would work with Munis.
I think it does. I think it does. I think it's integrated and I think it does work.
So does Odyssey?
It's an extra step, I believe.
QuickBooks. See, that, my, what I'm reading here is that Odyssey doesn't really work with either of them necessarily and that, not directly.
I don't, Michael, do you know, I don't think that's accurate.
That's not accurate. The, as a product of Tyler, Odyssey will interface and work with Munis. Now, Intuit from QuickBooks is a completely different product. So I think what we're really looking at more is a business procedure issue.
I agree.
That we need to figure out where the information comes from, where it goes, when it goes in order to correct this timing issue.
Okay.
I think there's, they will all work together. It's just a matter of a tight integration or like what we would call a batch processing that takes place every so often. Have to nail down how they're doing their business procedures where I can really tell you a hundred percent with.
Well, I can tell you currently it is manually coming to finance to be input into Munis monthly. It is not currently integrated, not that it can't be.
And that's due to?
Well, that's actually all I'm asking for. I'm just saying if we have a product that has more potential to work more simpatico with what we already use, I'd encourage everyone involved to floor that. That's all.
I'll be careful with my terminology.
Couple thousand dollars, it's no big deal. I'm just.
I'll be careful with my terminology. This is a lack of willingness on behalf of certain elected officials to use the product that they have available to them. And we fight that battle from time to time and try to educate and let them know that we have good things. But again, this, it's a matter of training, it's a matter, and we've had this conversation before.
Well, that's why I would like, that's why I wanted to bring it out in this meeting.
Johnson, does this body have the authority to force the court to reconcile their books?
No. As long as they're reconciled, as long as the audit comes out clean and they're reconciled, I would say that you probably do not.
Yeah.
Certainly not. Maybe for the Magister Court, maybe. Certainly not for the Clerk of Court being a constitutional office.
Any other questions?
It just seemed like, I probably shouldn't say this, it seems like, don't we pay for the audits and all of this stuff?
Yes, sir.
It seems like everything ought to be on the same page if asked whatever. Maybe recommend, recommendation, could we make a recommendation or request?
I think, so I've made the recommendation in the past. I believe this body has in the past, maybe with different committee members. I think what we'll do this time is I'm going to get with, with our Internal Services Director and our Technology Services Director and maybe have them approach it, maybe Michael, approach it with the Business Office Manager in the courts and see if we can maybe help them on the training side to see what they could do. And Leanne is a whiz at Munis. I mean, she is extremely good at it, knows the product backwards, boards. So we can help with that. So we've kind of tried the political route or the high level, we need you to get on this software. That's not been very successful. So maybe we can try this route and we'll start that immediately, seeing if we can work with their people to try to get them trained. It's a matter of training and use of product is what it is.
That be as user fully bought in?
Yes, because currently we have no way of reconciling their numbers for audit purposes. So at the end of the fiscal year, we actually pay our auditors to go to each of their offices, gather all the data that we need to put into the audit report.
We've had that conversation in the past.
I think we talked about that last year.
You know, and if we can't work it this way, maybe a letter from the board or a letter from the Audit Committee to the elected official may be another approach. We've tried it. We've had this conversation many times. But let staff try to do it. If we don't get a warm welcome, then I will come back to the Audit Committee and maybe suggest that we send something in writing requesting them to make some changes.
Mr. Blanchard, are you willing to go along with that and work on your level to talk to?
Absolutely.
Very good, very good. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, Probate Court.
Probate Court. So Probate Court has several, several things under their purview. They have a Civil Division that's responsible for state matters, Vital Records Division that does things, marriage licenses. They do the Georgia Weapons Carry licenses and they have a Criminal Division that handles traffic citations and other things. Lot of, lot of things going on at the Probate Court. And they were very busy and this was one of the reasons why I mentioned how much I appreciated the help that we have received. We looked at their cash receipts. Again, this is a circumstance where they, they hold funds in custodial sense. So we look at the cash coming in, the cash going out, and we saw no issues with those. We did look at bank reconciliations. This is, I believe, so we QuickBooks situation. We noticed the bank reconciliations were correct and agreed to the underlying records. During testing, we did not see a management review on the bank reconciliations. We like to recommend that as a best practice. Per inquiry, they are being reviewed, but we do recommend as a best practice initials and a date or something like that, maybe a stamp or a combination of stamp and initials. That's something we do see in other departments and other courts and stuff. And it is a best practice. Then there was the Traffic Escrow Account. And this is very similar to what we just discussed in the Magistrate Court. We're again looking to make sure that the internal records agree to the bank reconciliations or reconciled bank balances. And in this case, three years ago, when we looked at the Probate Court, we received this consolidated report of outstanding bonds and attempted to agree it to the bank statements. And we had some difficulty at the time. So this time around, we were looking for the same thing. And we were really unable to obtain a consolidated report of outstanding bonds that we could agree to the bank statement. So we're not, we were not really able to determine if there was excess or deficit, deficit cash. But we had no indication that there was any excess or deficit in cash. However, we could not determine if there was such a thing. And management has responded to our recommendation that, that internal reporting be reconciled back to the bank statement and their response is on page seven. We also looked at purchase requisitions like we do in every, every department. We noticed one transaction that didn't indicate electronic approval in Munis and that was, that was unusual, only one, but that was unusual. And then we noted five transactions that were above that $2,000 threshold that normally in the county's various departments would lead to obtaining multiple, multiple quotes. And so five transactions did not include that. And management has responded to our recommendation on page eight. We're basically recommending that county procurement policies be followed at the courts. And again, management's response is on page eight. We also looked at purchase cards. We did not see any issues with those and we reviewed time sheets the way we do with all of the other areas around the county and we did not have any issues there. No questions about the Probate Court?
Is the Probate Court obligated to follow county procurement policy?
I'll jump on that one as well. So again, you're dealing with a constitutional officer here. The constitutional officer has their budget, his or her budget. And as long as they stay within the, in the budget guidelines, they are not required to follow all of our policies. They're not required to follow any of our policies. Most of the constitutional officers elect to do that. At the end of the day, they are required to have a clean audit. They are required to track every dollar, just like we track every dollar. So they are responsible for the taxpayers' money and they are responsible for their budget amounts. But as far as saying that they're going to change the thresholds of purchasing from 2,000 to 5,000 or 2,500 or whatever, they are certainly legally able to do that. Welcome to the joys of, of county government and working with constitutional officers. They don't have these problems in cities.
They're also using QuickBooks.
And they use QuickBooks. That's right, thanks, John.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Mr. Snyder, any additional comments?
No, no, thank you. Again, I just, we, in light of the difficulties with the stay-at-home order and stuff that was going on while some of this work was doing, I was really appreciative of the help that we received from the various staff members that we worked with. Besides that, no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Enter that as information and we have, have any other updates? Any Commissioner and public comment participation? Being none, do we have a motion to?
So moved.
All right, and we will come back in four minutes? Is that enough time for everybody?
Sure.
Four minutes, thank you.
Management first.
Morning. Today is Tuesday, September the 8th and it is 8:58 a.m. And we are in the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. We have already prayed and pledged and having a quorum here of my committee. I'd like approval from the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So moved. We have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Johnson?
I believe we're good to go, Madam Chair.
Very good. Do we have any presentations this morning?
Presentation.
I have none, nothing on the consent agenda list. Move directly into debate. Mr. Johnson, what do you have for us today?
First item we have for your consideration is a service agreement with CSRA Alliance for Fort Gordon. We've done this for many years. This was budgeted as part of our fiscal year '21 budget in the amount of $25,000. Staff recommends approval of the service agreement to the service, I'm sorry, service agreement with CSRA Alliance for Fort Gordon.
And how long have we been supporting this organization?
We've been doing this fifteen years, six, ever since they've been in existence. So whenever we were going through the first round of BRAC, and I don't remember how long ago that was, time seems to fly, the alliance was formed at that time and Columbia County was a founding member of the alliance.
This is the amount we've typically supported?
Yes, yes. And I believe other, other counties have gone up and down in their contributions, but we've stayed steady with our contribution from the beginning.
we've stayed steady with our contribution from the beginning.
Our, it's one of the largest and most consistent.
It is the largest and most consistent.
Proud of that. Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Move to consent.
Okay.
So moved. Next.
The first item I have for your consideration is a safety grant award that we received from the ACCG Group Self-Insurance Workers Comp Fund. This is in the amount of $6,000. And it, it will be for the purchase of personal protective equipment for use during chainsaw operation by personnel in landscaping roads and bridges and fire services. Staff recommends approval and acceptance of this grant.
ACCG is issuing grants?
This is the second time, I know at least the second time we've gotten one. We got one for $5,000 last year, I think for fire, something with fire services.
Is the cash already in the bank or we have to?
Have we received it, darling? We have not received it yet.
Okay.
Move to consent.
And it may be a reimbursement. It's a reimbursement. So we will spend the funds first and then they will reimburse us.
So moved. Next.
The next item is the purchase of mowers for roads and bridges. The state of Georgia currently holds the contract with Morage Manufacturing Corporation. We would like to use the state of contract for the purchase of these. It's five mowers, three units are replacement, two units are for the new gateway crew. The budget was 75,000 and the purchase price is $66,899.09. So it is under budget.
This comes with all the parts and accessories and twills and all the stuff that you need.
I hope so.
Nothing extra.
They will, they will come ready to go.
The Chairman Duncan just asked, didn't we just buy lawnmowers? Yes, sir, we did. We, we cut a lot of grass. So we did buy lawnmowers for, I believe it was for the recreation last meeting. And now here we are again. This is for our roads and bridges and gateway crews.
This is the new crew. Are they in operation yet? We had to get equipment, mowers, trucks.
I think we're still standing them up. I don't think, we don't have all the equipment yet.
They can't be in operation. They don't have any lawnmowers.
Well, I get that, but do we have that crew in place, hired the people and we're trying to get?
Hire.
And three of these units are replacements. What happens to the ones that we take out of service?
We surplus those through gov deals.
If you're cutting grass eight hours a day.
We're getting a pretty good bit of use out of them if that's the case. We must be maintaining them well.
Second.
Thank you. So moved. Next.
The next item is adoption of policy number 603.3. This is concerning purchases using Federal Transit Administration funding. This is a requirement from the Georgia Department of Transportation. They recently did a risk assessment review and decided we needed this policy in place. So in order to comply with the DOT, we are asking that you adopt this policy as part of our comprehensive policy manual.
I have to confess, I didn't read it all.
I'm sorry, what?
I have to confess, I did not read it all. It is very long. Can you give me the highlights of what specifically?
A lot of it is dealing with different purchasing thresholds and just the procedures they want us to follow when, when making these purchases. You'll see that the policy itself is really just a one-page policy that stipulates we will adhere to their guidelines. And then attached is a copy of the guidelines. That way, if they decide to change one or two little words, I don't have to come back to you to amend the policy. Jeff, do you have any thing to add to that?
And there's nothing in here that's honor us on us to?
I actually think our current purchasing policies are stricter than theirs.
They are.
And so we follow the stricter guidelines, but they still insisted that they wanted their terminology. Had a problem with that.
So now we have to not have a stricter policy?
No. It's, yeah.
Government. Who's an acknowledgement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So nothing major change and no big deal, not going to cost you anything, heartache, stress, none of that.
Move to consent.
Make them happy.
Okay.
So moved. Next.
And the final item I have for you is a contract agreement with juvenile court. This is for Ms. Debbie Hatcher. She will serve as the coordinator for the Children in Need of Services program starting in October. The rate will be $1,000 per month. My understanding is this is actually a new contract position that was approved in this year's budget.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next.
All right. The first item that I have for you today for your consideration is road name change from Neal Drive to Coxwell Farm Lane. Neal Drive is a small private road off of Old Louisville Road. There's no presence there from the Neal family and it's predominantly owned by members of the Coxwell family. They've put in all the necessary paperwork and obtained the necessary signatures in order to change the road name to honor their family. So Neal Drive to Coxwell Farm Lane and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Okay.
So moved. Next.
All right. And next item I have for you is a dark fiber lease with Planners Communications. You may have heard of Planners before because we've had other fiber leases with them. They have a presence in our pop. So in essence, we've developed a pretty good relationship with them. They want to lease fibers, a 20-year IRU with us. The difference in this one and the previous arrangements that we've had with them is that their goal this time is actually to start servicing some of our constituents in the rural areas of the county with, with broadband services. Familiar with what we did with W C Tel some time ago. This is a different arrangement, but the end goal is the same, that they want to start providing services to some of our more rural customers, rural citizens, I should say. At signing, the county will receive a lump sub payment of almost $40,000. And over the term of the agreement, we'll get an aggregate amount of $105,860.06. Staff recommends approval.
Was the W C Tel contract 20 years also?
Yes, ma'am.
Second with a question. So they're going to take our conduit and run, our fiber and run connections to neighborhoods?
In layman's terms, yes, sir. They're going to use the fiber that we have in the ground already as part of our original arrangement. They lease those from us and they'll start to service the people out in the rural areas of the county.
Second.
So moved. Next.
All right. Final item I have for you today is the ESRI Enterprise Advantage Program Agreement. This is part of an ambitious project that we're working on right now to rebuild our GIS infrastructure. A few weeks ago, you approved an item with Woolport. It's a company that provides services related to city works. This agreement is with Esri, the company that provides our GIS software to come on site or to remotely connect to us and help us with the configuration of some hardware that we're going to be buying relatively soon. The purpose of this is to make sure that it's configured appropriately and will operate for years to come without any kind of technical errors. One of the challenges, and I'll give compliments to my GIS manager who's here today, that when he arrived in his position, he immediately started looking at the technical environment, determine what we need to maintain a top-notch GIS effort. And these are his recommendations. I concur wholeheartedly. Funding for this was approved as part of the 2020, 2021 GIS operating budget in the amount of $92,200. So staff recommends approval.
And this is for one year?
It's for one year, yes, ma'am.
Will we back again next year, having the same?
Same amount or?
This is, this is basically customized to what our needs are right now. So my hope is that we wouldn't come back next year, depending on where we stand in our implementation. The implementation should be done, Larry, the first quarter of next year?
This is consulting to make sure that we have the right, it's configured correctly?
Yes, sir. A very complex technical situation because we're working with Esri software and also city works, which is used by a number of county departments. So to make all of that work together, it requires a significant amount of technical knowledge and that's why we've engaged Esri to do this.
At the end of this rainbow, you'll have all the configurations laid out that we need.
Yes, sir.
Second.
So moved. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Blanchard?
Ma'am.
Very good. We have any other committees to report today? All right. Any legal matters? All right. Staff report?
First item we have is your personnel savings so far. You notice that we're really close to 247,000 already. One thing that I would point out is a conversation we had earlier today. If you go down and look into the actual breakdown, you'll see that roads and bridges is actually in the negative. And the reason they're in the negative is because as people leave and we pay out PTO, we don't wait for that payout to equal up. We don't, soon as, soon as we can hire somebody, we hire somebody. So there, there are some negative savings there. We've had some people that have left that had significant PTO payouts, but we immediately replaced them, obviously with a lower salary, but because we do it so quickly, we have a negative there. Still very strong savings. A lot of this has to do with the fact that people are just hard to find. You all know that. But I did want to point out that roads and bridges, that it was, it was the only negative that you see and it speaks to the conversation we had earlier about just trying to hire people to keep them cutting that grass. Yeah. She had a big payout.
Questions? Next.
The first report that I have for you is the year-to-date budget report. And I apologize, there's a typo on the sheet. Instead of 1.6%, it should be 16.6% for the month of August. I have included both last fiscal year and the current fiscal year. Don't pay a whole lot of attention to last fiscal year still. We're still working on year-end transactions and those numbers will continue to change. And for the current fiscal year, of course, it's very early in, but everyone's operating as they should be.
Questions? Last update?
Yes. The next item is the sales tax update. We have received funding for the month of July. That was just over $2.2 million and our current annualized percentage increase is 9.94%.
Keep up the good work.
Highest in the state.
Very good. Any questions? Investment report?
The final item is the investment report, just for your review.
No questions.
No questions? We'll accept those reports. Information, any other commissioner comment, public comment?
Do have a comment. Grass cutting and all, a lot of money on, on buying lawnmowers and keeping them covered. But we're still not doing the job that citizens expect on sides of our roads. I mean, when you're riding down in AB on a part of the county where a lot of people are doing, having landscape folks do in front of their businesses and whatever, that looks appropriate. But if you get on out and it's waist-high, it's, it's really a danger for people going down the road and deer or something running out or whatever. I think as we adding roads and sidewalks and all of that, I think we need to look at, what, what can these guys really do? What can they accomplish? When you're talking about cutting that grass and weed eating around guardrails and doing all of that stuff, how much at 105 or 10 degrees, what can these guys accomplish? I think we maybe need to come up with, we get so much mileage, especially when it's sidewalks and all of that, we add another crew and we look at that. Don't let it go and don't let it be waist-high. Our citizens do not. That's unacceptable. That's totally unacceptable to a majority of this county. I just think it's something we're going to have to stay on top of.
Think the rain has played a big part of that?
It has played a big part. When you can turn around and it's, it's 100 degrees and it's raining every day, you can see the grass growing behind you as you're going. And plus, these guys can't get on, in some of those positions and some of these places when it's raining. So that just throws us so far behind that we never catch up. That, that's the point that I'm trying to, we can't do it. And hey, you wonder why you can't get those guys? We're killing them.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
I have no soapbox to box today.
Very good. Next, we have an executive session item.
Madam Chairman and I make a motion, we just push this straight to the full commission.
Very good. So moved. Any other comments, questions, problems, issues or soapboxes? Very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By the way, we'll be pushing for another road cutting crew come budget time. Just let y'all be known about that right now.
All in, all in.
Now, are there any other comments, questions, problems, issues or soapboxes? Gary, how much time do we need?
Just a couple, two minutes or whatever for y'all to change out if y'all need it.
We'll be adjourned.
Four minutes.
Three and a half.
Three and a half minutes.
Much more efficient.
Much more efficient.
Order the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee meeting for September the 8th. Patient and patient here of, we do have a forum. Previous meeting minutes, if y'all are good with those?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Presentations, right into the debate and to business. Clayton? How are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you. After your consideration, an engineering proposal from Zell Engineering, line connector on Sugar Creek Gateway. We're ready to go to bid on our Sugar Creek Pumping Station. I looked and I said, where we going to pump this to? We knew we were going to have to do this work at 16. Line that would leave that pumping station, go up under I-20 and tie into the gateway area. Our third pumping station going to gateway. Obviously, I have some concerns about that area as it continues to open the road down there. So this engineering proposal is a 5.5% of construction cost, with the estimated construction cost being $396,000 some odd dollars there. We're estimating at $21,800 and I would recommend that an extension budget be set at $500,000.
Motion to accept.
So moved. Make sure you keep plenty of water over there.
There's one business over there that I get in a lot of trouble with if I don't. Crawford Creek, who were replacing, so we're coming up Crawford Creek, replacing the original sewer with a new sewer. Larger carrying capacity. Rose got there at Oakley-Percle Road. As they were doing the bore, and of course with sewers you have to boil and raise, you start out this elevation, you have to end up that elevation. Not just like punching a hole under the road. They hit a rock formation about halfway through that. Bit off, so even getting a rock bit in there helped us because of that angle of that rock. So we just decided that it might be just appropriate because we wouldn't get competitive pricing alternatives we had in there, to drop that part of this contract out of the contract and put it into the next contract that we have coming up very shortly. This will give us a credit amount of $134,606.6. And they are also asking for a 77-day increase in the contract. Would bring that contract due August the 30th. That would be good for them, but they were due it. And we spent a lot of time saying, what if we do this and what if we do that? Pricing on it. I would recommend approval of that change order.
Motion to consent.
So moved.
So we have a contract with Hudson Grassland out of Jefferson County for the purpose of hauling and spreading of our bio solids down. Now, we've been doing it since 2007, we had a 10-year. Five one-year extensions. Four on that. And my thought process that five of you will probably enter back into a long-term agreement. Because all these fields, my EP, had to go down there for three, twice I thought of it. Out of Jefferson County, not an easy task. Recommend this extension to their contract for bio.
Second.
Move.
Back in 2015, we did a advance program for the water utility. Because after having interviewed my employees, we wanted to forward. Like, no, what does our path forward here? That drove hard when they told me that. So in 2015, I brought an advancement program before the board. And look, I don't know if it dropped out of my book, my dog ate the pages. Not sure what happened, but we left out distribution payouts of the mechanical department, which Mark has pretty much surveyed by my head and shoulders. So we've crafted these advancement programs for those departments. They are associated with it. One of the discussions that Matt and I had is he didn't want an advancement program that you could do in an hour. Well, if you look at the requirements of something, you're going to do this in an hour. Matter of fact, some will probably take you, just the state licensing would take about a year. We would recommend that we bring these departments in. Bold advancement program associated like we do for our other departments. Recommend approval.
Pay for the training if they say they want to go to the next level?
We do sign an agreement with them. Have that money back. They've got enough built up. That's the agreement.
We've done this in a lot of departments and Mr. Clayton's done a good job of putting this together. We, we've been extremely careful of advancement programs. When I first got here, we had some advancement programs that literally required you to sit in front of a computer for a couple of hours and then all of a sudden you were eligible for the next step and then the next step. And you have people that were here less than a year getting three or four raises or three or four promotions in a year. What this does though is this allows us to keep our good workers. It allows the people that we are spending money training them and they're not just jumping chip on us as soon as they get all their training and going somewhere else because they can see that they have an opportunity to advance here. And not everybody wants to be a supervisor. Some people just want to continue to work in the role they're in, but they can't just stay in that role for 20 years with no advancement.
Oh, second, uncharged, I'm sorry. I was waiting on you to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot these, that's for you. Have one from Mr. and Mrs. Rock for your consideration. I don't think any money was involved and we recommend acceptance of that easement.
Second.
So moved.
There's another here and I believe there is. Clint Hardy's put these on me at the last minute. He does a good job, of course, though. From Michael LeTrock.
I think we just did that one.
They were both the same one.
I recognize that right off the bat as soon as I said it.
They combined them. They were, both of them were on one at motion.
We recommend it.
Still, still recommend it, huh? Okay. Make sure you didn't change your mind on this.
I thought about it all weekend on Labor Day, but no, sir, we accept them.
All right, Mr. Titus, you, where's Mr. Jackson's?
Yes, sir. The first item we have for your consideration is for a permanent ingress and egress meant for retention upon maintenance off of Buff Road. It's 0.26 acres is donated easement. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to consent.
Are we taking ownership of this pond, basically, or what?
This is a, actually a relocation of an easement. If you look at the plat, you'll see that there's actually an existing easement. And when they built the warehouse down there, they built a road in there. So they're actually moving that easement over to a new location on the existing road. But just, we've already owned the pond. It's just a new way to get to it.
Second.
The second item we have is for the execution of a stormwater permanent easement or pipe installation in a neighborhood project to mitigate flooding issues. It'll be donated easement. It's 4,511 square feet of permanent easement and 2,935 square feet of temporary easement. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Keep in mind, the last item we have is related to the same project. It's the same issue with the easement with HOA as well.
Second.
That one while we're here.
Okay, perfect. All right, the next item, Georgia Power Distribution Tree Trim Clearing Easement. This is on the parcel at the end of Southern Pines Drive in Furious Ferry where our lift station is. This is the county-owned parcel that surrounds that lift station. Through the Furious Ferry project, Georgia Powers have them relocate some of their power lines and this is for a tree trimming easement on that parcel. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved.
Similarly, the same lift station we just spoke about, this is the parcel of the lift station and this is for a permanent easement to that parcel. Our staff recommends approval.
Second.
Second.
The next is, next item we have is for the purchase of three items for stormwater capital equipment. The first, this is all, has been approved on the 2020 budget. The first item is for a vac truck in the amount of $425,700. Second is for a green climber lawnmower, which is a remote-controlled slope lawnmower in the amount of $87,710. And the third item is for a forklift in the amount of $48,906. Staff recommends approval.
These new or replacement?
All new.
All new.
Why do we need them?
List is long. The vac truck is what we use to keep our storm systems free of debris. We're required by our MS4 permit to inspect and clean.
Do we have some, don't we, it seems like we've, I've seen this picture before.
We do have a vac truck. It's four, almost five years old. You don't want to wait till it breaks down or somebody can't have one. So we're bringing a new one on now. We actually have both of them running for a while.
So is that one stormwater also or is it?
It's stormwater. Water utility has one too.
We just purchased one.
Right, so two different.
Right, that's what I was.
They do the same function, but two different, two different systems. The green climber, that is a slope mower. It allows us to put a remote-controlled slope mower on these really steep slopes instead of putting a person on them.
We bought another one of those recently.
I think we have.
I don't think we ever bought one of these.
I remember discussing it.
Not stormwater.
We purchased one. I checked, but it's in our budget, but I've won a couple of years ago.
We've demoed them 100 times. We, they keep making improvements to them and I think we finally got to the point where we're happy with the work they do. We've turned over many tractors on these slopes. It's not safe to put our people on it. So we finally found a solution that we feel is good to keep these mowers, I mean, keep these people off of these steep slopes.
But again, we bought one of those in 2020, I'm guessing.
I don't remember buying one.
Yeah, Nick said we, Nick said we bought one.
We've discussed it, the remote control and, yeah, I mean. I thought we bought.
It kind of goes back to Commissioner Richardson's comment about how much grass can we cut? If we have one, we can cut one slope.
Got enough equipment to cut the world, I think.
Well, we will.
What is, so a individual remote controlled this and what is this compared to tractor or whatever? And how much time will it cut as much as somebody on a mower? Though I know this is dangerous.
Yeah, I think, if you compare this on a, on a slope compared to a tractor on a slope, I think this will be faster. You don't have the, the scare factor of the operator. Be a little more aggressive, a little faster with the remote control option versus sitting on top of a tractor and sideways. The tractor, if we were to buy a John Deere, what, 120, 130 grand just for the tractor?
It said it'll cut up to a three-inch diameter.
What is a forklift for? How's that we?
You do, stormwater has a warehouse that's located out at Water Utility and they are constantly receiving shipments in. So this will actually allow them to start unloading these pipes. Right now, they actually think they're borrowing Water Utilities. We have a plan of relocating stormwater, hopefully sooner rather than later when they're going to need all their own equipment anyway. But right now, there's times where we can't borrow Water Utilities because it's in use and so we have to have a truck sits there or have to unload by hand. So unloading pallets of cement, we're doing a lot of mortar work out there with boxes. So it's a lot of stuff we can unload by hand, not without completely breaking it down off pallets. So loading, unloading materials.
Move to consent.
Second.
Move.
The next item I have is for the acceptance of deed and improvements for roads, stormwater and sanitary systems at Highland Lakes Phase 1 and Wright's Farm Section 1. We do know that in the warranty deed, we need to update it to reflect the two-year warranty. But staff recommends acceptance of improvements in addition upon the staff's approval of the final plat, as-built warranty deed with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawing.
Highland Lakes is Magnolia?
Right next door. We want to make sure he's not associated with Magnolia. New owner, new developer.
I rode in there on Sunday. It's big.
I move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
We've already taken care of the last item. This is HOA.
Any legal matters?
Can we do that vote just to clarify that? Because I think we all missed that vote earlier when y'all did it. Did you? I was, I was lost too.
Okay, so we need to redo that?
If Patrice is okay with it, I think we're okay.
It's all donated.
Okay, yes. All right, Mr. Driver, any legal matters? Staff reports? Clayton?
Yes, sir, I have for y'all's consideration our budget report, which is as it should. Now, I thought the present off and conversation. Find my own business. They were doing journal entries and next month should be more to my liking. Is that what you said?
Pretty much.
Then I have for your informational purposes, an update on our extension and renewal terms as well as a copy of our work performance. I'm more than willing to ask any questions.
Did the rain get into your Christmas season?
It's a little bit, but I always got next spring coming.
Okay.
And we hadn't had a frost yet.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Questions or public comment? Executive session items, so we'll adjourn at 9:38.